Hello and welcome to the Pittsburgh City Council Budget Hearings. My name's Barb Warwick and I will be chairing the hearing today for Councilman Kraus, who regrets that he is unable to be here. The department we'll hear from today is the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure. So if you all would like to come up to the table and introduce yourselves, and then we'll kick off with our Budget Director, Peter McDevitt, to give a brief overview.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Yep.
The mission of the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure is to provide the physical mobility necessary to enable the social and economic mobility of the people of Pittsburgh through the management, design, improvement, and operation of the public right-of-ways, rights-of-way. A quick overview: The Department of Mobility and Infrastructure is comprised of three bureaus: Planning, Policy, and Permitting; Traffic Operations; and Project Design and Delivery. There is a total of 117 positions proposed in the 2024 operating budget, which is an increase of five positions. There will be two additional project managers going from eight to 10; one less superintendent; one additional traffic management center supervisor; one less associate project manager; one additional associate project manager, too; a reduction of two project engineers; one additional inspector four; seven additional right-of-way construction inspectors; one less materials testing supervisor; three less inspectors, too; one additional fiscal coordinator; a reduction of three inspector telecommunications; and one additional each of the bridge maintenance foreman; heavy equipment operator; structural ironworker; and cement finisher. Overall, that's an increase of about $150,000 from the 2023 budget, but this is the first time we've come across this. There is 0% salary increases reflected for the PJCBC positions as those ongoing CBA negotiations are playing out. A quick summary of non-personnel changes: Overall, there is a $378,000 added to non-personnel items. In that, there's about $270,000 increase for professional services, most of that going to computer maintenance for Cyclomedia. There's $100,000 additional for bridge-related maintenance, and about $7,000 increase in operational supplies. In the capital budget, DOMI takes up the majority of the funding that the city has. In 2024, they have over $84 million allocated to them. A lot of that is transportation improvement project funding. The 28th Street Bridge is $470,000. The Bridge Preservation and Restoration Fund has about $3.5 million. Claire Street Bridge, there's $550,000. Charles Anderson Bridge, there's $27 million. Complete Streets, there's $14.6 million. And then some other notable projects: Flood control projects, there's a little over $5.6 million. The Heron Avenue Bridge, Larimer Bridge, Liberty Avenue TIP is $2.3 million. Penn Avenue Reconstruction, there's $1.18 million. Penn Avenue Signal Improvements, $230,000. Rampant Public Sidewalks, $1.4 million. Slope Failure Remediation, $4.55 million. Step Repair and Replacement, $2.8 million. Street Resurfacing, about $17 million. And Trail Development, there's $200,000. That's all I have.
Okay, great. Oh, I should also mention, I believe we have Councilwoman Strasburger online, is that right? I can't see.
Yes.
Great, and then we're also joined by Councilman Wilson. So...
Ready for us?
Yeah, go ahead. Yeah, introduce yourself and take it away.
Good afternoon. This is the, we are the Mobility and Infrastructure. We're going to talk about for our budget meeting, 2023 look back and 2024 look ahead. I'm Jeff Scalakin. I'm the Deputy Director, currently Acting Director for DOMI.
I'm Evan Gross, the Fiscal and Contracting Supervisor.
I'm Angie Martinez. I'm Assistant Director with Planning Policy and Permits.
Eric Setzler, Chief Engineer.
And we have somebody online also, Mr. Malick.
Hey, good afternoon, everybody. Mike Malick, Municipal Traffic Engineer, Philadelphia right now. Happy to talk, thank you.
Thanks, Pete. So we're going to talk about our mission and goals for DOMI. Our mission is to provide the physical mobility necessary to support the social and economic mobility of the people of Pittsburgh through the management, design, improvement, and operation of the public right-of-way. Our goals are simple: No one dies or is seriously injured traveling on our city streets. Every resident can access fresh fruits and vegetables within 20 minutes. All trips less than one mile are easy and enjoyable by walk, roll, and bike. No household must spend more than 45% of their income on housing, transportation, and energy. Our streets reflect the values and pride of our city. Our organization chart is led by the Director's Office with the four bureaus who just introduced themselves today, and like what Pete said, we have about 118 full-time positions in 2024. Our budget, DOMI has the fourth largest budget overall. We're driven by having the largest capital budget. DOMI has 54% of the 2024 capital budget. DOMI has the eighth-largest operating budget. I'm going to go over a couple slides of our assets. Our street assets is we have over 1,000 linear miles of streets in the city of Pittsburgh. This includes 90 miles of concrete streets, 80 miles of brick-and-blockstone streets. We currently own over 44,000 streetlight fixtures. We have over 850,000 street signs. We have 613 signalized intersections. And crosswalks and pavement markings, we have over 10,000. For our bike infrastructure and structures, city of Pittsburgh has 145 bridges. We own approximately 800 city steps, around 700 retaining walls. We manage and own 33-plus miles of guide rails. We currently have 252 bus shelters in the city of Pittsburgh. Our total bike infrastructure is over 115 miles. Our dedicated on-street bike lane is looking around over 40 miles. Bike racks, we currently have over 1,000 bike racks. Our 2023 accomplishments, this is something we're really proud about and we want to be able to highlight them to everybody. Our maintenance and operation, we paved 45 miles of roads this year. We also did .6 miles of trails. We repaired 12 concrete, brick, and blockstone streets. We painted over 2,000 crosswalks. We repaired 2,000 signs, and we installed over 3,000 signs this year. We also improved timing, we also improved signal timing at 53 intersections. In 2023, we had over 11,000 requests through 3-1-1. Just the top two I will highlight was streetlight repair, and the second one was replace/repair a sign. Our permits and code enforcement: So far to date, we had over 9,000 permits that were issued. We also reclassified the Inspector 2s and telecom inspectors to new right-of-way construction inspectors. DOMI performed over 23,000 inspections for permits. And with those 23,000 inspections, we found over 1,000 right-of-way code violations. For landslide walls and streets, we have about seven projects that we accomplished in design or construction in 2023, and here's, shows the list of the seven that we've done. For sidewalk improvements, we finished three major big sidewalks for the city on Walt Street, Rhine Street, Otilia Street, and we also did nine additional smaller projects. Bridge rehab and replacement: 30th Street Bridge and River Avenue Viaduct, we finished that in 2023. The Charles Anderson Bridge, we had unfortunately closed that bridge this year. With Eric's team, they did final design accelerated, they accelerated final design from 18 months to six months so we could get that bridge in construction in 2024. We have seven bridges that either started in design or continue in design in 2023. And we also have nine bridges that are a startup in 2023. Bridge asset management: This is something we're very excited about. We are staffing up. We're adding on people to help us with the Bridge and Structures Division. We hired a Deputy Chief Engineer that's also going to help, Eric Setzler. That person is hired and they've been here for about two months. We also brought on a project engineer, a staff engineer, and two structural interns. We have interviews for two additional positions. That's the Bridge Maintenance Supervisor and a Project Manager. That Project Manager is going to manage the walls and steps and landslides. In 2023, we completed the Comprehensive Bridge Asset Management Program. We also did a load rate analysis update on our bridges. For expansion dam seal replacements, we replaced expansion dam seals on 16 bridges. We had steel repairs on Swindell Bridge. We did sidewalk repairs and netting on California Avenue Bridge. And we did three concrete repairs on bridges: On Bloomfield Bridge, Elizabeth Street Bridge, and Maple Avenue Bridge. Various concrete repairs were also done on seven additional bridges. Neighborhood traffic calming: We completed 15 projects this year. Homewood Mobility Plan, traffic safety priorities was completed, and we also launched DOMI Traffic Calming Request Portal. Complete Streets: We finished the Fern Hollow Cycle Track. This was the first Jersey Barrier Protected Bike Facility in the city of Pittsburgh. Penn Avenue Cycle Track, this was the first bike facility upgrade to more permanent lower maintenance materials. This is the first time we used precast concrete curb protection. And the 2023 Bike Plus Network, we added 2.2 miles and we improved 2.8 miles. Traffic Signals: We had three capital budget replacements that were completed on Hamilton and Homewood, Fifth and Shady, Brownsville, and McKinley. South Side Signals was completed. This project was for five signal replacements and to add one new additional signal. We completed the Penn dot East Carson Street project, and we had design kickoff on North Avenue Signals and Frankstown Avenue Signals. Downtown Signal Improvements: This was a state-funded grant project to add ADA combinations to 32 traffic signals downtown. Penn Center, this was a signal revision to revise signalization and improve pedestrian comfort. Streetlights: We had our 2023 was highlighted by, we had the LED design kickoff for our streetlights. We completed over 4,000 streetlight repairs, and we resolved over 800 one-call requests. Planning: We finalized the East Liberty Priority Corridors Pedestrian and Traffic Safety Plan underneath Angie Martinez here. We also kicked off the three corridor studies on East Ohio, Brownsville, and Broadway. We're improving engagement. We had a mobility open house, we had, we had two of them. We had one in Homewood on July 6th. We had one in the Strip District on September 12th. In this, in 2023, we started up the Complete Streets Advisory Group. Safe Routes to School: This was the first year of Safety Town. We had 25 first graders that learned pedestrian, bike, traffic, and school bus safety. And we the third and largest walk-and-roll school today event ever. Our Curbside Program Management: For bus shelters, we had 14 new or replaced bus shelters in the city. Smart Load-in Zones Pilot, we revised a program to better meet the needs of businesses. Okay, for the Shared Mobility Program Management, we had over 200,000 scooter trips in 2023. We had over 170,000 pogo trips. We installed 22 new pogo stations and added 220 new bikes. Zipcar trips was over 6,000. We installed four new zipcar spaces, and we launched the Guaranteed Basic Mobility Program. We also had the conclusion of the Move Pittsburgh, Pete, I'm sorry, we had the conclusion of the Move PGH pilot. Bicycle Parking: We installed 94 new bike racks citywide. We also updated DOMI's Bike Parking Guide. I'm going to turn it over to the Bureau Chiefs, and Evan's going to start for the 2024 overview and objectives with the 2024 capital budget.
Thank you, Jeff. Before we go too much into all the projects we made this year, just a quick recap of some fun with the numbers. In 2024, DOMI has 46 unique projects totaling $84 million, an increase of $25 million from 2023. Of that, $27 million is coming, is going to the Charles Anderson Bridge Reconstruction Project. Other major projects that we're funding this year are Andover Terrace, Stewart Avenue Flooding Remediation, and Traffic Calming. 53% of our $30 million of bond funding is going to the paving program. This leads into the, how DOMI brings in money for the city. Of the remaining $15 million, DOMI is bringing in $48 million of outside funding for the bond fund, so roughly over $3 for each dollar of bond funding. And I'll pass it off to Eric, who's going to talk about what Structures is going to do this year.
Thanks, Evan. Yeah, so diving in on the topic of bridges, we have three bridges that will be in construction this year, big projects and two projects, the Davis Avenue Pedestrian Bridge and the Charles Anderson Bridge Project, that rehabilitation, which also includes superstructure replacement of the adjacent Panther Hollow Overpass, which is over by the Shenley Pool. Both of those projects will be starting up this spring. On the design side for these bigger projects that are funded through the TIP with state and federal funding, we have a lot going on. We have four projects that have been in design and will be pushing along, getting into final design. We have another nine that will be starting preliminary engineering, and then we are looking at three additional projects that will be starting up using a new design open end that we have through PennDOT. So we have a lot going on with our bigger bridge rehabilitation, preservation, and replacement projects. On the asset management side for bridges, our big task this year is to set up our new bridge maintenance division. As Pete mentioned earlier, we have some new staff being included in the 2024 budget, so we're going to be working on hiring those staff, finding our location for this division to be located, procuring vehicles and equipment, which we have a grant to help fund that. And if all goes well, our, our goal is to be performing maintenance with in-house crews by the fall. We also have a little over $1 million in operating funds for bridges. That will cover some of the, the smaller and pedestrian bridge inspections that we are responsible for, load rating analysis updates, priority zero and one repairs, which are the urgent repairs that come out of bridge inspections that we need to deal with right away. Washing and cleaning, which we know is one of the best ways to keep our bridges in good shape, is to keep them clean. We'll be doing some more expansion dam seal replacements, and then getting into some of those lower priority or, you know, next level of repairs, those priority two repairs as the funding allows. Moving over to city steps for a moment, we have three large projects that will be going into construction in 2024. Those would be the Stanton McCandless Steps, the Fraser Street Steps, and the Downing Street Steps. We also have a large project called the Pittsburgh City Steps Project. This was funded, 80% federal funding that we got through a federal earmark. We're going to be doing four to five complete step replacements as part of that project. It has PennDOT oversight, and working through their process, we will be selecting a consultant and kicking off design in 2024. Another thing that we are working on continuing this year is improving our inspection program for elevated steps with in-house crews. Moving into landslides and walls a bit, our biggest project is the Mount Washington Landslide Remediation Project. That was the $13 million project primarily funded through FEMA. We've been working on design the last couple years, and all three project sites will be under construction in 2024 for that project. Some other significant projects that will go to construction this year include the Bruhl Street Landslide, the Slide S6 in Riverview Park, and the Ruthvenn Street Wall Replacement. We have a number of other projects in design, including Herndon Street, Aporto Street, Andover Terrace Permanent Repair, two additional landslides in Riverview Park, the Serpentine Drive Retaining Wall in Shenley Park, and a landslide in Emerald View Park. Moving over to sidewalks, streets, and trails, we will continue to invest in sidewalks through our Critical Sidewalk Gap Program. We have $1.4 million of funding budgeted, and we will be identifying projects in high need areas that have importance for pedestrian transportation, schools, bus stops, things like that. Two major street reconstruction projects are continuing in final design. Those would be Smithfield Street Phase One and Penn Avenue Phase Two. Our reconstruction of Chestnut Street, replacing all the brick, will be, Phase One is underway now, and we are going to be able to move into Phase Two directly and get that entire street reconstructed. And then on the trail side, the Trolley Trail Phase One that we've been working on design for a couple years will be going to construction this year, and we are starting up a new project related to the Allegheny River Green Boulevard Plan. That's an overview of my bureau. I'm going to turn it over to Mike now for traffic.
Thanks, Eric. And if, if anyone here has difficulty hearing me, please let me know. This is somewhat unsettling, doing it from a remote location as opposed to in the room. With respect to where traffic calming is going and what we are looking forward to, I would say, overall, it's summed up with growing and evolving. We, we hear constantly, are most requested and the most desired projects in our city from a traffic standpoint are ones that call traffic. Angie Martinez will get into this later during her portion of the presentation, but I, I do see us as having a bit of a crisis on our hands in terms of the number of people who are seriously injured or killed on our city streets. And this is across the country, this is not unique to Pittsburgh. So we have, we have sought and received an increase in funding for traffic calming projects through the Marriage Draft Budget, which we are incredibly grateful for. This has also come with the addition of one staff person, so we'll go from a team of, I'll put, I will call it two and a half people to three and a half people who are devoted to these traffic calming projects. What that looks like is that while we're going to try and deliver more projects, you know, 15, that's the number we're proud of, but I know from a constituent standpoint, that's not enough. Nothing we do will ever be enough, but we, we want to deliver more. This is, this is a project that is a problem that is not going to get better, it's getting worse, and so we want to try and throw everything we can at that. Similarly, we, we want to reevaluate what traffic calming means. The Neighborhood Traffic Calming Program was born out of the time, pre-COVID, and when it responded to one need and met that need well. It's changing, it's constantly growing and adapting, and so we want to look into more different types of countermeasures that we can implement. Everyone thinks that speedhumps with calming, and they will always be an important part of that equation. What else can we do, like what else can we implement that may cost less, that may be able to reduce this type of crash? So we really do want to while simultaneously growing, also just reevaluate every year we have to because the problem is so elastic. And next slide, please. So the other, other portion of my team that does not get nearly as much attention as traffic calming, but is actually where the vast majority of our budget lies, is traffic signals and streetlights. We have approximately 100 traffic signals in the city that are, they're outdated, they're in dire need of replacement, and so I, I do envision a world where we just very slowly and steadily replace them with new equipment. We're also aggressively going after grant opportunities to try and expand our budget and tackle this problem. There are five signal replacement projects that we have targeted for 2024, you can see them here. Three, actually four of them are grant-funded through state grants, either the Green Light Go or RLA program. And you can expect them to be replaced in roughly the order that you're seeing on the screen. When it comes to our most impactful large, large projects, this can be federally funded traffic signal safety projects. We expect the Central Business District Phase Four project to be complete during the year 2024. Yeah, you probably have seen some of that construction take place, including the intersection of Forbes and Ross adjacent to the county building. We will complete design on one of our large federally funded programs or projects, the North Avenue Signals Project. This is an effort to replace traffic signals and rebuild the roadway along North Avenue from Arch Street to James Street. Something that, the BRT project, that is not a city-led effort, we are a partner in that project, is being delivered by a partner of Pittsburgh Regional Transit. This still takes up a substantial amount of staff time because at the end of the project, we are the owners and we are responsible for the signal maintenance and operations on that project. And so the Downtown Loop Project, which I believe, we actually probably saw construction moving along Sixth Avenue as recently as two weeks ago, that will take up a significant bit of staff time because we are going to be involved in any construction decision that impacts changes to the 16 signals in the Downtown Loop that are supporting BRT. So that's, I would expect a significant portion of our year to be taken up by these large traffic signal and safety projects. A project that's been long awaited, that we are really, we are quite excited, it kicked off in design this past year is the LED Streetlight Conversion Project. This is, I believe we're up to 14, 13 or 14 million dollars of funding to complete a design and then also replace and upgrade our current streetlight inventory with LED. We expect to see movement on the construction front during the year 2024, and we will be releasing a website that details where and when you can expect improvements to come to your neighborhood. So overall, from a traffic standpoint, it's going to be both a busy but incredibly exciting year for us. I appreciate your time, thank you.
Thanks. I'm Angie Martinez overseeing planning policy and permits. And I'll start with the work of our planning group. So that team is slated to complete three corridor projects in 2024. The first is Broadway Avenue, which is funded through a DCED grant, and because of some stipulations around the use of those funds, we're actually also going to be moving into construction in 2024 for those quick build, intersection, and safety improvements. The other two corridors are Brownsville Road and East Ohio Street. Both of these corridor studies are being funded with local dollars, and while they're different, different streets, different needs, what I want to highlight about them is that they are taking a similar approach, and that in looking at these corridors and in identifying recommendations for them, we're really seeking to be implementation-focused in the types of recommendations that we find. So when these plans wrap up in 2024, what we expect is that we're going to be able then to move forward in 2025, seeking additional funds for construction of those recommendations so they're actually implemented. Our planning group also plans at the higher level, more strategic scale, so we'll be kicking off two substantial planning studies in 2024. The first is our Reconnecting Communities Grant for Manchester Chateau. This is a $1.4 million grant from the feds that's going to be used for feasibility study to explore ways to create better connections from the Manchester neighborhood to the Chateau Neighborhood and Riverfront, which is currently cut off by SR65. We'll begin a public kickoff and engagement for that in late 2024, and we'll have recommendations and a preferred alternative for the best way to make these connections in 2025. The other planning project that will be kicking off, also grant-funded, is our Three Rivers Heritage Trail Maintenance and Management Plan. So some folks may think of our Riverfront Trail System as being purely recreational. At DOMI, we recognize that it's also an important part of our transportation network overall, but it faces unique challenges because of issues having to do with drainage, or invasive species, other environmental issues. So what we'll be doing as a part of this plan is pulling together diverse group of stakeholders, DOMI, DPW, Riverlife Friends at the Riverfront, and other property owners who have a stake in making sure that our Riverfront Trails are properly maintained and managed so that they work not only for recreation, but also as a part of our transportation On the policy side of the house, we seek to always be developing policies and procedures that... that increase the...
My mic went out.
My mic went out. I think it's a battery issue. I think we got it. So on the policy side of the house, we seek to pursue policy and procedures that increase the safety vibrancy and efficiency of our transportation system. Some of the highlights that our policy group will be advancing this year, continued support for DOMI and also the Mayor's Vision Zero Initiative. So as, you know, our chief municipal traffic engineer emphasized, safety is utmost priority, and we're living in a state of unsafety on our city streets. And so it takes intention to change the tide for that. We also look forward to advancing automated red light enforcement. This is actually an enforcement mechanism that the city has been authorized to implement by the state level for several years, but we haven't advanced it because we haven't brought the stakeholders to the table, public safety, parking authority for enforcement, folks from procurement to figure out how we would actually operationalize and deploy a automated enforcement system for traffic safety on our city roads. This is an imperative of the DOMI policy team to make sure that that work actually gets started in 2024. Again, we'll continue to seek process improvements for our utility coordination and paving. And then, lastly, something I want to emphasize is our attempts to improve transparency and FaceTime with the department. So Deputy Director Scalakin brought up, you know, how DOMI has tried to be more intentional with our engagement. We've gone out to these mobility open houses, we've reconvened the Complete Streets Advisory Group. We recognize that it's important that we're not just engaging with members of the public or members of council on a project-by-project basis, but that we're actually doing it in a way that we're getting input on the direction of our policies and our priorities. Sort of to that end, I want to make a commitment that in 2024, DOMI will be back to City Council to present two reports, the first being our Complete Streets Advisory Group Biennial Report, and then the second being our State of Mobility Report. And the last couple of slides I have for you are actually a bit of a preview of those efforts. So for the Complete Streets Advisory Group Biennial Report, that policy, which was established in 2016, identified 12 metrics that DOMI is supposed to be reporting out on. I selected just two to sort of put on the record here. The first is since 2018, we've completed 26 sidewalk projects. That equals 6.1 miles of new sidewalk built. Eighty-six percent of these sidewalks were in neighborhoods that meet USDOT's J40 designation, which means they're identified by federal USDOT as areas of high equity need. Since 2019, we've installed almost 26 miles of bicycle facilities, and what that represents is 45% of our city population living within half a mile of a bicycle facility. So we report to you every year our, you know, annual outcomes and achievements, but I think when you look at them, sort of, not just retrospective of one year, but retrospective of several, you start to understand how we're making real advancements in multimodal infrastructure and safety improvements on our streets. Our State of Mobility Report, we look forward to presenting to you in 2024. It relies on an analysis of PennDOT five-year crash trends. The types of crashes we look at are serious injury crashes, total crashes, fatalities, and then vulnerable user crashes, and if you can go ahead and get my bullets up for me. Some of the points that I think are worth just stealing out from this analysis, the first, that total crashes have decreased in 2020, so during the COVID period, but serious crashes and fatal crashes have actually surpassed their pre-COVID rates. And this seems to be a national trend where things kind of slowed down during the pandemic, but now that we're back, we're really back and surpassed in our streets being unsafe. Additionally, digging into this analysis, state roads represent only 12% of roads in the city, but they account for nearly 50% of fatal crashes. So what that tells us from a department and policy perspective is that any advancement towards safe systems has to be lockstep with our partners at the state. And then lastly, bicycle crashes are also up. So in 2018, there were 43 reports of bicycle crashes, and then in 2022, there were 50. So we're seeing an increase in that. Finally, our State of Mobility presentation also did an evaluation of the traffic calming program. Again, this is one of the hallmark programs coming out of DOMI, and all I'll say about this is that by all metrics we look at, decreasing average speed, decreasing percentage of driver speeding, and decreasing vehicle volumes, our traffic calming program is effective in all of those areas.
And that is a conclusion of our budget meeting. Budget hearing, sorry. Any questions?
Yeah, so I'll let members go ahead. I guess Councilwoman Strossberger, you want to go first?
Yeah.
She's still there?
She's muted.
You might be muted, Councilwoman. All right, move, we'll come back. Councilman Wilson?
No, you're not working.
Community microphone.
I don't know what's going on. This was... It's not working.
I could just use it.
It's like you're at a press conference or something. It's all the microphones.
Well, I'll be lying. You're the first one. Well, thanks. Does this work? I don't even think this is working.
I'm not hearing it.
It's not picking you up.
Oh, no, the interpreter's saying no. She can't hear you.
Yeah. Oh, boy. Good thing this is an IMP. So I apologize for my voice this second time in the month that I've lost it, so. All right. Well, what I can say is we've, I think we've accomplished, well, you all have accomplished a lot, I'd like to say it together, but you basically do a lot for my district, and wanted to take a moment and thank you for that. I could list off, I probably got more projects than I have fingers right now. So we got the Davis Avenue Bridge. We have, well, that's our ones that we've completed. So we have connecting a major community to Spring Hill Park, and that was, that was like a good tenth of a mile. We did a new sidewalk. It's at the top of Ryan, I can never remember that. Ryan turns into a street, but anyway, it goes around South Side Avenue and connects to Spring Hill Park. And we're going to be investing in that whole park, probably upwards of $2 million to renovate that park, and that construction is going to start in the summer. And that was a project that we, you know, we partnered on early on and had to figure out how to happen, because there was never a sidewalk there. So we were always walking the street, getting dropped off from the bus, walking on the street. It was just, you know, a dangerous situation, and, you know, it really speaks to how we're going to connect communities to a park, instead of people, you know, walking on an undeveloped street. And that one, there's Ryan Street, where we put, where groundwater was entering the right of way, also known as the street, or the sidewalk and then street, and that was also a great project, where we, you know, tucked it under the street, put it into the catch basin down the line. We have walls completed, a major street that connects one side of Spring Hill to the other side of Spring Hill. Currently, East Ohio, I'm sorry, Chestnut Street, full renovation, sidewalks, you know, took out the tracks, putting the brick back in, you know. So I could go on and on. We have different traffic calming from Woods Run to Turman that we've done throughout the year. We've partnered on different bike facility projects, looking forward to the one in the Strip District. I think it's a real opportunity there. I'm proud to represent that area and what we can do there to make sure that there's better mobility. We also worked on that Eighteenth, was it Eighteenth and Smallman?
Twenty-first.
Twenty-first and Smallman? See, that's how new I am to the Strip. I made it more friendly there, so I just appreciate the work that we do together. I think we also make it safe. There was a lot of complaints. Bridge is safe in terms of California Avenue, you know, things falling off that bridge, and, you know, we put the netting up. Surprisingly, that one scores much higher than others, that it looks worse, but it scores higher, which is, you know, anything that looks visually bad is bad for PR and bad for, you know, bad for everyone involved, because, you know, no one understands, because when you look at it, it looks terrible, but we're making it safe so things don't fall into the roadway below, and also the buildings. And then did some, I believe what would be called the initial, the initial work that currently is being contracted out, that we would do for the bridge maintenance in-house. Is this correct?
Yeah.
You know, my memory's still okay. I'm trying to keep it going. So, but my understanding is that that work that I saw done there, so the netting is something separate, but then there was some bridge maintenance to get it along until the full rehab comes in place. Can someone explain what I saw there, which looked like they were doing a host of different things? How much of that will we be doing in-house with this new budget?
I had a microphone, I tell you.
Does that one work?
Oh, I turned it off.
This is going to be difficult.
This one's not working.
I can try to use that one. We can get it over here.
I don't know what's happening.
Sure. Yeah. No, you're right. We did several things on the California Avenue Bridge over this past year. We installed the netting, we did concrete repairs to the sidewalks, we actually fully replaced a couple of sections of sidewalk, and we've also done some seal replacements where the expansion dam for the water is leaking down through the deck. The, you know, the Bridge Maintenance Group, the in-house division, we're going to start small and go from there, you know, build our capacity. The first thing that we want to be able to do is do the cleaning of bridges, washing out those expansion dams, washing the decks clean, cleaning the areas under the bridge where dirt and debris can accumulate on the concrete and cause, you know, cause deterioration by keeping that water in there. We would like to get into concrete repairs, so if you have like a small spall in the bridge deck or on a pier, we can go out and fix that. We will have the capacity to do some of those seal replacements, where we're taking the rubber seal out and putting a new one in. So those are the kind of things we're going to start with, and then, you know, we'll hopefully build our capacity. Something to the extent of putting the netting up would probably always require a contractor just due to the equipment.
It's going to be, you know, I tend to like to cut people off sometimes. It's going to be hard when I have to pull the mic away. Be like a weird. But no, I appreciate you going into that. What, there was something specific I wanted to ask about this. So what will actually, what will that do? So we're trying to do that maintenance before the full rehab. Like, you know, why is this so important? Because I just want to, as we go into this budget season, I just want to understand what, you know, and do we have enough allocated to, you know, to do the maintenance that's required for the amount of bridges that will go under rehab and need kind of hobble along?
So, you know, the advantage to being able to do it in-house is, you know, last year, we put out a work order to a contractor for $50,000 to do some bridge cleaning, and that was very successful. You know, we didn't clean every bridge, but we cleaned a number of bridges. This year, I think we're expanding our reach and we're giving a contractor a work order somewhere in the range of $150,000 to do cleaning. When we have that staff in-house, you know, obviously we're already paying the staff, but there'd be very little additional cost to do that work in-house. So it's a pretty big operational savings to do that work in-house.
So they will do the same work?
Yes, they'll do the same work. I mean, there could be some special situations that we may still need to bring in a contractor for very complicated situations, but they'll be doing all the routine stuff.
And that expertise, is that something that we can easily hire for, or is that going to be, you know, an avenue we go down where we're having trouble hiring people because we're not paying enough or...
You know, there are a lot of good folks out there. I mean, just talking to Public Works, who also has, you know, similar kinds of people who do stuff in the construction division, I know it can be challenging at times to hire those kinds of jobs, but, you know, we're going to get our word out there and see what we can find.
I just want to also highlight some of the stuff that we've, so thanks for that. Some of the stuff that I really like working with your department on, or more than just roads and everything, is we did the, you know, the outdoor dining, you know, recently worked with everyone on the Purple Curves, the Smart Loading Zones, and, but for me, what I like most about your department is that it's really, I mean, I hope I, I hope a lot of other people have the same interactions, because my interaction with DOMI is that whatever the community has been complaining about for years, whether it's traffic speed, whether it's they don't have a sidewalk that, you know, they can't get from one place to the next, you know, this wall was being damaged, literally I've seen DOMI really make sure that you're holding yourselves accountable when those topics come up, and you end up, I mean, obviously with everything in government, it takes some time, but we've seen some projects in District One that have come to fruition that I think people thought were impossible, and you all made that possible, you know, on several different matters. So I just want to commend all you for the work that you've been doing. I think oftentimes, I won't name any names, but I'll say, and I'll say, you know, I really appreciate all the work you do, I love your department, and they'll be like, can you say that in the, in public? I'm like, yeah, I will say it in public. So here we are. I think, I'm excited to see what's to come. I think, you know, I don't have anything I feel like I need to, you know, complain about or harp on. I more or less just want to ask you, do you think that you, in this total full-time positions that is being increased in the budget, these budget allocations that I see, in the total capital spending and everything? I know you're going to say that you don't have enough for bridges. You know, that's state larger dollars, and I know you're not going to say you don't have enough for road paving. You know, we're always, you're a numbers group, so you're going to tell me that they don't meet the standard of what should be done. But overall, what I'm looking at here is this, you know, would you say this is what you need, or is there something else that you're not seeing here that you need?
I mean, we always need more people and money, right, to get things done? But I really think the new department, the new personnel and Eric's job will help, but really, in Angie's group, the inspectors, we haven't seen an increase of inspectors in four years, four or five years, so we have, I think, currently nine or 10 positions, and that's for the inspections, inspection for the whole entire city. That's all we have. We've been running at that number for...
So it says plus four here. What are you saying? What's the number you need?
That's all we have currently is nine, nine full-time inspectors.
But there's plus four, that could you...
I can maybe take that question. So because...
I mean, we always need more people and money, right, to get things done. But I really think uh the new depart- the new new personnel and Eric's job will help. But really, um in Angie's group, the inspectors, we haven't seen an increase of inspectors in four years, four or five years. So we have, I think, currently nine or ten positions. And that's for the inspections, for the inspection for the whole entire city. That's all we have. Um we've been running at that number for.
So it says plus four here. What did you say? What's the number you need?
That's all we have currently is nine, nine full-time inspectors.
But this plus four, that could you tell?
I can maybe take that question. Um so because uh we have been so. Constrained in the um the staffing levels within our inspection unit for the past four years or whatever it's been since we've seen an increase. We made some changes to the job descriptions and we reclassified our telecom inspectors and our inspector twos. Into one unified inspector discipline so that we could make more efficient use and coverage of the city. With the same amount of people. So that the what you're seeing in the budget summary. Is really just reflecting the way Domi reclassified our inspectors. It does not signify. A change in the number of inspectors that we actually have in our unit. We did put a uh operating budget request in for inspector ones. Um this is our um entry level inspector classification. And uh the purpose for doing that is because we've done some um work uh from the office to say like. Where where are we most lacking in our inspection and code enforcement world? And it's actually in catching people who are doing work without permits. And so we believe that if we had more inspectors, entry level inspectors, boots on the ground, eyes on the street. Um our streets would be safer and we would actually increase our permit revenue. Um because we would be, you know, capturing people who are doing work without permits.
Makes our our roads safe too.
It's not reflected um as an outcome of this year's budget, but it's something that, you know, we continue to want to see growth and investment in.
So what do you think the magic number is for?
I have a magic number and then I have a realistic number. I think if we had two inspector um inspector ones, two additional. Um that would bring our total to four and we would get a good coverage of the city.
Okay, well, thank you and uh appreciate everything you're doing. And maybe I'll think of uh, you know. Something something else to ask you, but let's continue. Thanks.
Yeah, thanks. Um Councilwoman Strasburger.
Hi, thanks for your patience to change platforms to be able to use this. Can you all hear me okay now?
Yep, we're good.
So I wanna thank everyone at Domi for the work that you've done over this year and I'm really glad to see that the second. Proposed budget. This appears to cover, you know, a lot of the shortfalls on the first proposed budget. To be able to get really, really good work done. And just to comment on a couple of things that you mentioned that you highlighted and I'd like to just highlight as well. That. That, you know, um traffic calming continues to. March forward as does traffic signal improvements. Um but I'm really, really glad to see that our that the red light enforcement, the RLE program program is. Also a stated goal for initiating this year. Um as you know, but I wanted to say for the for the public's benefit. You know, I've been an interest of mine for a few years now and um I wanna continue to partner with Domi. On that program, on getting that up and running and passing the necessary legislation to really get it. Not just passed, but this time really implemented. The theory being that if we can have red light enforcement, automated red light enforcement that doesn't involve human, human contact. Hopefully, there's a ripple effect with even those um traffic signals that don't have red light enforcement came back. So um I think that would do a tremendous amount to improve public safety in the streets over over the next few years and um looking forward to working with you on that one. I was gonna move on to some questions unless there was a response to that or anything you wanted to add. Similarly, the bridges, you know, um I learned a whole lot by even just by first meeting on the the Bridge Commission. I said, as council's um representative on the Bridge Commission and. Um as was noted today, but also with the commission, really hopeful to understand that some of our bridges that. Are in the worst condition or were in the worst condition numerically. Have, it did not need a full rebuild immediately, really just needed maintenance to be able to. You know, maintenance or closure in the case of the Charles Anderson Bridge and I just, I guess I wanna highlight that. The city, despite how convenient it is, choosing to close the Charles Anderson Bridge is a is a win. It reminds me of P W USA and boil water advisors, like probably something we should have been doing for a long time now, but. But we're doing the right thing, even though it's sometimes difficult to to take. And so I think between maintenance, between having a systematized way of handling bridge maintenance and repairs and funding. You know, I, if if those in charge of our bridges are saying they're sleeping better this year than they were last year, then I am too. So I'm glad to be a part of that project, that that endeavor as well. I'll start with, I I feel like the theme of this budget is creative revenue sources. I mean, no one wants to cut anything. We are gonna have to make cuts in the next couple of years if. If necessary, but um but especially when it comes to Domi and critical projects, I mean, more than half of the capital projects are under Domi. We don't wanna make cuts. Um I understand that you said before, uh previous budget hearings and sessions. For instance, Washington DC's transportation department is about ten times the size of Domi. Um I know that we're getting a little closer this year to where uh the staffing levels that we need to get worked on. And I think, you know, something that we talked about in our in our initial budget briefing and I wanna say publicly here is. Is grants, like grants are great. You take, you bring in, we brought in like seventeen million dollars in grants in twenty twenty-two. That's a huge amount. Is. Is there a need, would you be able to find even more or utilizing more state and federal funding? If the city had more capacity to assist you in the back of house management of the grants. Applying for our management out of reporting back. Is that something that we should be looking at from council's perspective outside of Domi to be able to invest in? So that we can spend even more of. Taxpayer money, money from the state or federal level rather than just always paying from the city level. I'm thinking of this as something where um we don't have a commuter caps. We don't have bridge holes. There are many, many, many people who come in and use our streets, bridges. Sidewalks plus, plus, you know, plus, oh, but streets and bridges. And, you know, that is the city, the city residents who are paying for it. So what can we do to even expand further what um kind of grants we're bringing in?
I'll take that one. Uh this is Jeff. Um I think if we had a dedicated person either sending in O M B or with Domi. That can look for other resources um as grants that we can um that work well with what we do and how we do our job. I think that would help. I mean, right now, we do not, Domi does not have a dedicated dedicated person internally. It is led by Angie Martinez with help through Evan and myself through. Through um looking for grants, but I think if we did have a per- have a dedicated person to um really put together like a program. Of what grants are out there, what grants are coming, that will definitely help Domi.
That's really helpful to hear. Um I guess I didn't realize there wasn't a dedicated person. Of course, we have a grants office, but. Perhaps someone who's been in Domi full-time um something to look at. Because I just think of, you're already so successful. I think the number was what, a dollar forty grant funding for every. Dollar the city contributes. I mean, that's hugely successful for not having a program or a dedicated person. I just wanna see that continue to expand, especially as we have a time of unprecedented level of support for contracts. Um potentially state level as well. I um wanted to move along to um. A question that I asked and I don't think you know the answer. I think I asked it at a briefing and I wasn't sure if there was any clarity on your end. The idea that for austerity purposes, the city is not spending money on. Or initiating new capital projects, but really focusing on existing capital projects that we can finish and, you know. Actually invested now uh to allow for minimal to zero new borrowing, you know, and and floating the funds. Is. There some sort of um, are there guidelines that you've been given or that you're working under as to what's considered? A project that has begun? Is it just that it was in a prior budget? Is it that, you know? There were maybe flex posts in the idea of a design that needed to happen, but the actual design hasn't happened yet, like. What what are you, is there something that you're working under those um? Those constraints so far or do you have a better understanding of how that will fit there?
I'll take that one again. A lot of our projects uh that we receive grants take time. It takes time after we win a grant. We're awarded it, we do come to council, uh represent it to council. And then we have to put together an agreement to um bring that money into the city. So that's also another process and then we also have to advertise a project out. I mean, we're looking at sometimes when we receive a grant in twenty twenty-three. That money might not be, I'm gonna say, real, but we're able to spend it for a year or two. And that just takes time to spend federal money. Again, people and money, um it's will help Domi move our projects, but. Uh when we receive, when we receive a grant, not necessarily that money is spendable that calendar year. Usually, it's like a year after. Sometimes two years by the time we um get an agreement together, get the project advertised, get a scope of work. Uh takes sometimes two years.
Sure. So just to clarify, I, you know, I do care about folks who are getting grant funding, but I'm really talking about any project. Just here, very clear from um the mayor's office that there was the the intention not to embark on any new capital projects. But mostly just focus on those that have been initiated and started. I didn't know if there was a definition, I mean, certainly something that's a grant funded project would be. I hope considered, you know, um already embarked upon, but if there was a a definition that you're operating under. Uh only because I think, you know, we wanna know what we can report back to communities, like this is a no-go for two years. Or this is considered, you know, a project that we can continue to work on or fight for.
I mean, I would say there's not like a exact written definition of of what's an existing project and what's not. But, you know, certainly anything that we've started design on would be considered an existing project. That we would um, you know, hopefully be able to continue to make progress on. You know, from our department standpoint, I think it's fair to say that, you know, we've looked at everything that we would like to do, both existing and new projects and and we've put those out there. And through the, you know, through the budgeting process. Some of those prioritizations have, you know, had to have been made as far as choosing what's, you know, what's existing or what's the furthest along for funding right now.
Um if I can um provide the planning perspective, um I'd like to add that. Um the projects that uh will be delivering this year are either carryover from um, you know, projects that were funded. In prior year's budget or grand dollars coming online. Or they can be a, their planning studies or the state of mobility report, which can be done using um in-house staff. But uh something that you said about getting creative with use of existing budget. Um this is where planning and the traffic group, I think, are gonna have to work very closely together in twenty twenty-four. Um we received an increase in our traffic calming budget. We received additional planner and additional traffic person. Um in our respective departments, but we didn't receive any um project specific line items for corridor studies. The way we had for Brownsville and East Ohio and prior year budgets. And so we're gonna have to get creative to see, you know, can we um leverage our in-house capabilities, our in-house staff? To maybe advance um studies and projects on corridors that have been a little bit too complex or advanced for. Um the neighborhood traffic calming program as we've traditionally approached it. So um, you know, I I think. The additional staffing really helps us. Um we, because we've been so understaffed. And like the staffing levels haven't matched the um program or projects to begin with. An increase in staff and sort of steady or same level of projects actually helps us a little bit. It's not sustainable in the long run. Um but for, you know, this next year, I I think uh we might be in a in a good place to get ahead of um some of the curve that we've been. Behind on.
And I'm gonna chime in on one thing that Eric might throw things at me. Uh if you look at the steps uh budget. Uh the steps capital projects, the two, two of the named ones, McCandless and Downing are existing projects that. As they've gone through the design process, I believe the cost estimates have gone higher than we've had, so it's filling the. Holes in the budget so that these projects can be delivered.
That's helpful. That's helpful to hear kind of, yeah, how you're thinking about the various divisions within within Domi, how you're gonna get it done. Thank you. Um something I asked again, um in the briefing, I want to make sure to ask it again for the public's benefit is. And it's something I'm asked about a lot, so I just wanted to make sure that we were having a dialogue here is. You know, flex posts are sort of like, there's a love hate relationship with them. They're helpful for quick and. Relatively cost-effective traffic calming measures that won't damage a vehicle. Or say a fire truck or an ambulance if they need to, you know. Get around them in an emergency at the same time. Probably not what everyone wants in every part of their neighborhood, like I'm sure if we could, we would. Transition as many of those into what like the treatment that we have now on Hen Avenue downtown or um planted. Bump ballots that have plants growing out of them or something that's just, you know, a little bit more beautiful. And so what is the plan to? Assess the balance, the assessment and the kind of data tracking of the effectiveness of the existing. Um kind of flex post traffic calming projects with balancing that with new projects, always wanting new ones. With the tendency to want to um. You know, kind of make more permanent, concrete. Investments in these projects that we've that we've installed, but then, you know, five years later, there's still flex posts, so. How, you know, how are you thinking about it? If you could, if you could just share that with the public as well, it'd be helpful.
That's a good question. I. Disappointed here for love hate relationship with flex posts, even though I understand why people feel that way. I I would say. That we collect data. So any project we're doing, whether it's a speed hunt project, a paint flex post, we have before and after data. To assess the efficacy of what we build. The benefit of paint flex posts is that if it's not effective, we can go back and change it. We can also, you know, carry forward lessons learned in a temporary or a quick build environment and then put that towards. Basically what you mentioned, something that's more permanent. There is an intention to use some of the increased traffic calming budget to, I guess, hardscape. To to build out projects that were deemed successful based on primarily speeding, like vehicle speed. And vehicle volumes. I I don't have a particular percentage in mind in terms of five percent of them in the budget, ten percent. But we do be arguing to that point where early generation projects do need to be cleaned up. And once that are, were successful, I would like to go back and put money towards in terms of making it. An official build party environment as opposed to a flex post. It's a good question.
Thanks. Thanks for mentioning on that one and um, you know, I know it's one costs more money than the other. There's a push-pull between like. It's more expansive, kind of traffic calming and um. And upgrading of existing, but I think it's something that I hear about fairly often. The last, the last two points are just points that I'll make. That is that as we um convert our streetlights to LED. That will generate, that'll be cost savings in the long term, pretty massive cost savings in the long term, right? Does anyone have that number offhand? But it's gonna save us a lot of money in electric, electricity costs and of course, like pollution emissions as well. But that one is something that is like an expenditure that we pay over the long term. And maybe less so, but if we can get red light enforcement up. It's my understanding that the funds, that some portion of the revenue or a portion of the revenue collected through fines that goes into a statewide program. That then goes back and pays for upgrades of traffic signals statewide, in which Pittsburgh can get to a competitive grants. So both of those are programs that, like, I'd like to see more of those kinds of programs that give themselves over time or a portion of themselves over time.
Can I have one minute to follow up on that, Councilman? So the RLE program, right, our goal here is not to generate revenue. Our goal here is to reduce severe, severe injuries and fatalities.
Yes.
Something that I think is pretty poetic about that program is that, so the state runs it. The money that is collected from these cameras, it goes to the state and then fifty percent of that money remains at the locality where it was collected. The number one scoring metric, when they are selecting traffic signals to be replaced with red light funding. funding, is how much it will move the needle in terms of reducing serious injuries. And so it's a very data-driven approach, primary focuses a history of injuries or fatalities, and what kind of countermeasures can you build through a traffic signal replacement project that will have an impact and mitigate those concerns. And so, that is a model we should be bringing forward, and I'm glad you brought that up.
Great. Thank you. I don't think I have any other questions right now. Uh, just, again, appreciate your work, appreciate all that you do, and multitudes of ways, and um, look forward to supporting, working with you and supporting this work throughout next year. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Great, thanks. Uh, Councilman Wilson, did you have another question?
Yeah. In the slide, I don't see a number, but the ones with the graphs.
Mm-hmm.
You ever got over. This one here, it says, the first data point, our first bullet point says that, uh, crashes decrease recently, but they're getting more fatal and serious.
So our, um, state of mobility report will report on, um, five-year crash trends, and that first bullet was just to illustrate that, um, between 2028, or excuse me, 2018 and 2022, the five-year snapshot, there was a dip in all crashes, um, most due to COVID and just less people traveling. But now, now that we're out of that decrease, where we've surpassed the rate of crashes that, of the pre-COVID levels. So, streets are more unsafe than they were in 2018, five years ago.
So that's similar to, to violence in general, that where, you know, there's, when it does happen, it's just more serious. So what, like, what's the reason for that in terms of car, uh, car crashes?
There is a wide, um, amount of reasons that might be the case. Um, it could be the speed of the vehicle, um, it could be, um, that we're seeing an increase in, uh, more vulnerable road users, um, you know, having crashes with vehicles, and, you know, people are less durable than other automobiles. Um, but those types of, uh, sort of questions or exploration, we'll get into in greater detail with that full report. I just wanted to call out some of the high-level, um, data points that, you know, resonated with us, and, uh, we'll, we'll try to present on some of that, um, in greater detail when we're, we're back in the first quarter of '24.
Interesting. All right, I lied, I have two more questions. Uh, so in terms of sidewalks, I mentioned a few that we've done, uh, in District One that I thought were very impactful. I elaborated about it earlier. How much funding is currently in the, is proposed here for projects like that? So?
Yeah, so this, the 2024 budget shows $1.4 million for critical sidewalk gaps. Um, 400,000 of that is tagged towards a specific deliverable whose name I'm forgetting. Um,
District One?
It's in, it's in the Homewood neighborhood. Uh, it was a larger project. Um, the other million dollars is a general line item. Um, DOMI has been going through, our streets group and our planning group have been going through and identifying locations. Hamilton Avenue is the one that's identified by name. Um, the other million is for the program in general, and as I said, we've been identifying some locations, um, tentatively right now, and, um, probably I would guess by January or so, we're going to be getting a draft list probably up on our Engage page, um, and start, uh, identifying those projects for construction for next year.
So 400 is dedicated already, and then the other?
The other 1 million is, um, we're looking at projects.
So currently, I have to look, and nothing's decided yet?
Correct.
There might be some stuff, some stuff in the harbor, but what about, uh, the funding from the previous year? Previous two years go by, has it gone by going up, or is it staying the same, going down?
Um, the 1 million as a general line item is definitely higher than it's been in the past. Um, so this is a pretty, pretty hefty budget for sidewalks.
And for instance, a project like Walls, how much, how much money is that? Like, what's approximate?
The, do you know what the final number on that was?
I think the Walls sidewalk portion was $100,000 or so.
$100,000. So that, not accepting the, the retaining wall, the wall, work we did on walls, but the sidewalk was about $100,000.
Yeah. Okay. All right, good to hear. And then the other, uh, question is around, I forgot to ask a question with the LED lights, so I'm glad that, um, Councilperson Straussburger mentioned it. So we did 3 million with the study, so we, I mean, we already authorized, you know, to do, to do a full contract previously to the, this administration. So, but when they came in, we, we, um, I mean, I don't know exactly how, um, I'm not trying to blame anyone here, but it's just a fact of the matter that we, we had it going, and then it was decided it was best to break it up into two different phases of RFPs. So we did the first one with, uh, the 3 million towards the design.
That's correct. We have, um, the, uh, the city, and actually, um, the management of the program has moved from the Planning and Policy Division into the Traffic Division, which I think is a very good organizational change. It puts, uh, streetlights and traffic lights under the same, uh, program manager, but I, I can still answer that question. Um, we have, um,
But I wasn't really?
Oh, we have a design contract underway right now with plans to bid the construction project in the future.
Okay, yeah, you're, I didn't ask a question, but you already answered. Yes, I just wanted to go over that. So it's, so that 3 million, is it already spent down?
We're work, no, the contract is signed and the con, um, the consultant is doing their work. Um, we're in the process of standing up the Engage page, um, because we'll be kicking off, um, you know, public engagement around that plan, or excuse me, that project, um, in the new year.
And that's, is that 10?
It's the Efficiency Network, yeah, 10.
And then for the build-out, the construction, how much will that cost? Is that in this year's budget?
No, it's in the previous year's budget, I believe. It's, we still have $11 million for the construction phase of that project.
Okay, and then that, has that come, that hasn't come to the?
It hasn't been bid yet.
Yeah.
It'll be bid, I, I think it'll be bid sometime next year, but I-
Yes, that's, my understanding is it'll be bid next year.
But I heard in, in the previous councilperson's question that there will be, where we would start seeing some improvements this year in terms of traffic. Were, were they talking about traffic signals? Maybe I got confused.
That must have been a mistake on my part. If there won't be any LED, the LED project is going to be a large, strangely evolving effort to try and best, best get, get all 39,000 of our LED luminaires replaced.
Okay, yeah.
The exact form that it looks like, I don't think we can say for sure until we get further into design, primarily because we don't know how many areas in the city are lacking lights. So it's not just a apply-the-play swap, take a luminaire down, put one up. There's a certain amount of work in terms of this street is missing. It has a dark gap here, X, Y, and Z location, so we need to put poles in locations, that's why, that's why there's some uncertainty in terms of how, or, you know, do one construction contract with just replacing luminaires. Uh, once you start working on poles, it becomes a lot more complex.
No, I get it, and it's, council's talked about this extensively on the last, um, you know, in the, in the last, uh, RFP that was done for the full thing. It's a very comprehensive topic about, you know, even right down to, I think some council members was wondering if we should even do it. Um, but, you know, in terms of, yeah, so I just want to get, get that clarification, because I did hear in a previous line question that there was, kind of, we were going to see some improvements this year, but it's not, although it was allocated in '23, we still haven't seen the bill to enter into, you know, the bid process hasn't happened. And so the earliest we may see it would be 2025?
2024, there will be some movement.
You'll see, in 2024, you should see the contr, the construction contract coming through council, at the very least.
The cost savings are going to be in the energy usage and the maintenance of the new system, which will be less than the existing. So we won't see those, um, uh, we don't, won't see those improvements until the new system is online, until we actually have the higher performing fixture in place.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. So that will not be in 2024.
Yeah, I'm just asking questions about just the timeline here. You know, just trying to understand the project more. Um, because whenever those, we spent, what's that, 11 million is allocated? 11 million is allocated in 2023.
12 million is allocated.
12 million.
And-
And that's ARPA funding still?
Uh, 700,000 of it's ARPA, the rest is bond funding from '21 and '22.
Okay, maybe that's part of that, we swapped some money there. Okay. So I think it was previously all ARPA, then we moved, then things were moved around.
I think there was another 2 or 3 million of ARPA originally that got transferred in one of the ARPA changes, but the-
There always was that bond.
Yeah, the 12 million bond has always been there.
Okay.
Or has been there for two years.
All right. Do you, will this 3 million that we're spending on design, it'll tell us a more exact number of whether or not the, what's previously been allocated is enough to do the full?
I think it'll give us a good cost estimate for construction.
Okay, because just looking at the, the five-year plan here and how much, you're seeing the paving is low, so just want to be mindful. But we could do this in two different phases or several phases of the, I mean, you know, of this, uh, this whole rollout of the LEDs. So that'll, that'll be to come, so. Looking forward to it. Thank you.
Thanks. Yeah, so, um, I actually, I have, um, a couple questions, uh, from Councilman -elect, Charlene. So, uh, just around permitting. Um, I, I actually have a question myself around permitting, but, um, uh, so he wanted to know, so DOMI is charging, um, a new service line fee, uh, $110 for private service line permits, and this is in addition to the street opening fee. Is that correct?
Um, the question is about the, uh, 2024 right-of-way fee schedule, and there is a, um, fee in there for a service line. It's $110. Um, that's meant to, uh, it's actually an improvement of our existing fee structure, I will, I will say. So, um, the way opening, the way service lines are currently assessed a permit fee is based on the square yard of the opening, and then the length of time that, uh, the street is open for, or sidewalk. Um, what we did is we simplified the fee to $110 per line, and that doesn't, it doesn't matter how big or how small the opening is, it doesn't matter if it's 14 days or 30 days. We wanted to create a flat fee for service line replacements, because frankly, our, um, opening or excavation fee schedule is so convoluted and confusing, um, that we think it makes it difficult to administer, and it also makes it difficult for, um, utilities and other to plan. So I think that there may be confusion with the way that fee is intended to be applied. It's not intended to be a new fee, it's intended to be a simplification, um, to the existing fee structure.
Okay, okay. And then have you communicated this to the utilities and?
We've communicated in writing to the utilities, um, but I think that there is value to, um, bringing folks together and being able to take, um, questions in a meeting setting, and that's something, um, we can take back for our 2024 planning.
Okay, okay, great. Um, also, just with regards to permitting, um, because we had our PLI hearing, and also IMP, and just talking about the, the one, one-stop PGH, and, um, just ways for our permitting processes to be more standardized across departments and on the backend, so that it's not like PLIs one thing, and if, then, and then there's DOMI, and then, and then, so that things are more of happening simultaneously whenever they can. I don't know if you want to speak to that?
Yeah, um, I will say that our, um, I, I call them our sister departments when it comes to, um, you know, reviewing development proposals. So PLI, city planning, and DOMI, um, all have various level of review responsibility, and, um, it's important that, you know, we are, we break down those silos and we put into place business practices, um, that work for residents and work for people who, you know, want to invest in our city. So, um, there are some changes that will be coming to, um, the permitting system, um, in '24, um, that, you know, DOMI has been a part of, um, you know, making sure that the, it's going to work for us to provide oversight, you know, within the right-of-way, but that it's also going to improve, um, the permitting process, uh, for the customer as well.
Okay, great, thanks. Um, and then, yeah, so, uh, I guess I'll start off with, um, I'm, I'm really pleased about the traffic calming, um, program and the, the goals there. Uh, thank you for working so hard on, you know, getting that, allowing that to happen, working with the administration, and also, um, we talked a lot about it as well. Um, and the Complete Streets Advisory, you know, moving toward being a vision zero city, these are all very important things. I mean, I, I feel like, n- next to gun violence, right? Obviously, traffic safety is the number one. You know, that's the most dangerous thing for our kids, and even, even if, even if it's not that a kid is getting killed every day, the, the reality is that people are not, don't feel free to just let their kids play in front of their homes, right, because of, of cars. So, um, but in terms of all of these, uh, you know, whether it's traffic calming, or new bike infrastructure, or sidewalk pilots, that kind of thing, um, how, I just want to ask a little bit about how you are, if, if you have any particular projects that you know are happening this year, and other, and if, and for the areas where you don't know, just to talk a little bit, just for the public, about how you come up, you know, how you all decide which projects to do, because there's obviously so much demand citywide.
I'll start on this one, if I may, and then Angie, feel free to chime in as well. It's, it's, uh, it really depends on the type of project we're pursuing. For the previous iteration of neighborhood traffic calming, we now some, receive applications. In terms of our work, if you already know this, feel free to tell me to move on.
No, no, this is for the public, so yeah, please, yeah.
Perfect.
Yeah.
And so we receive applications. The program has evolved, now anyone can go onto our GIS-based portal, you can select your roadway, you can ask for it to be, um, studied in terms of whether or not there's a need for traffic calming. That will trigger DOMI to hire someone to go out and collect data, and see if those seats boxes, they're attached to utility poles, and they are measuring, uh, primarily speeds and volumes of traffic on that portion of the street. We currently have, it's over 1,000 applications we receive now over the course of the program's life. And so we, we make a scoring rubric that takes into account the speed that's collected, crash history, pedestrian generators, which would include schools, house of worship, uh, business districts. And the presence or lack there on other sidewalks are also put into this scoring matrix. And the first round is purely as simple, is does your roadway see speeds higher than five, regularly see speeds higher than 5 miles an hour above the posted speed limit. Most parts of these streets that are posted speed limit is 25 miles per hour. And so that's kind of an early indication that if it's, our data indicates that 85% of the traffic on that street is traveling below 30 miles per hour, we are not going to consider it for the first, we're not going to consider traffic calming in the immediate future. For railways that have that meet that speed criteria, then they're scored based on everything that I mentioned before. Uh, their inequity index is applied to our scoring as well, which in working with Angie and her group, we will be moving towards the J40 method for assessing equality and making sure that we are spending our funds. In the J40 districts, 40% of our funds are spent in those districts identified by the federal government. Um, we currently have 200 sections of city roads that meet our criteria for calming. We only do, right, actually, we did 15 projects. And so it's heavily driven by the score in our current equity index, and, and we also seek a certain amount of geographic distribution in terms of making sure that our projects are spread across the city. Does that, does that reasonably answer your question, councilmember? Does that, does that reasonably answer your question, councilmember?
Yeah, yeah, it does. The one concern just generally, and I understand like speed and volume data is just for, for neighborhoods that don't have, you know, for our more remote neighborhoods. I know I have a few in my district, there's a few, Councilman Coghill's district, Councilwoman Smith's district, where, you know, if it's a remote neighborhood, you're never going to have the volume. You're just never going to have it because there aren't enough cars, right? You probably do have the speed, depending on the road, but so just to kind of account for the, you know, and maybe, and maybe that's just the way it goes, right? Like maybe that's just a 10, a 10-year plan is when we start seeing traffic calming in, in, in those more remote neighborhoods. Because of course I understand where there's the most, most pedestrians, the most cars, you know, there, the highest risk of, of an incident. But in the meantime though, since that is, is such a long-term prospect, right, to really have traffic calming everywhere, because they are expensive projects and they take time to implement. If there are any, because, you know, we get a lot of requests in for stop signs and things like that and I know we've talked a lot about stop signs and you can't have them and, and, you know, sort of the guidelines around that. Are there any ideas from the department of sort of low-cost kind of quick-win things that we can give to communities that are saying, you know, look, I just have, like these cars are just speeding down my street? Is there anything we can do for them other than just, you know, like so in the meantime?
I can get started on that. I, I think that DOMI recognizes that achieving Vision Zero, achieving safe streets for everyone is not purely a infrastructure or design proposition, that there's also education, there's also enforcement, there's also just, you know, collective community, you know, treating our neighbors as neighbors, you know, and, and courtesy that I think is, that also needs to be in place. Every speed hump or flex post that we install needs to be maintained. And so a tra, a successful, you know, DOMI department is not just a traffic calming department. We have to figure out how to cultivate that sense of responsibility and safety, I think, within our residents. And that's one of the reasons why we're so excited about re, relaunching our Complete Streets Advisory Group and continuing to work with the mayor's office and council on Vision Zero, because it's not just engineering, it's not just design and infrastructure, it's really putting people at the center.
Yeah, absolutely. So, yeah, and, and definitely going forward, working with Neighborhood Services, Public Safety, DOMI, you know, even if it's PSAs, you know, just whatever to get the word out that people really need to be slowing down. With regard to that, and we're talking about the LED program, I actually think that that's, that might be, I mean, something to consider, that might be a program where you can, because it is like streetlight repla, you know, it, it's, it's not necessarily dependent on volume of people, that might be a way to kind of give a little love to our more remote areas, right, to, just to kind of, you know, the, the areas where it's sort of feels like they're a little forgotten by the city because they're far away, like maybe streetlights, that's the night, like you could start with them just as a thought, you know, in terms of like the installation. Let's see, oh, the bus shelters. I wanted to just quickly ask if you could explain, because I've had some questions about the, because, so do we contract with a company for some of our bus shelters? If you could just explain how that works? So I know we do some, maybe PRT does some, yeah.
I'll do, I'll, I'll give the high-level overview and Jeff or Evan can chime in if I missed anything. The city does contract out our bus shelter maintenance with an outside vendor. This was, it's a 10-year contract, it was awarded competitively to Gateway Advertising. The way the model works is that they sell ads on our city-owned shelters and in response, they are responsible for regular care and maintenance and then also, you know, more installing new shelters or more expensive or heavy lifts for like refurbishing, so like actually replacing glass, repainting, energizing shelters so that they have, you know, power and, and those sorts of things. The shelter contract also awards $100,000 a year that goes into the Shade Tree Trust. So we get not only the vendor providing shelter maintenance, but we also do get a, you know, a small contribution to our city's Shade Tree Trust. It's a, it's a scenario that works because it's important that our transit shelters are clean and, and they work and we don't have in-house operations staff to actually go out there and make sure the response times are where they need to be. But that's the way the relationship with the vendor works and that's why the advertising element is a part of it. We don't have to pay them to do the service, in fact, they pay us. In exchange, they sell ads.
Okay, so if, if, if there are ever issues with shelters, do we, should we direct those to you or, and then you send them to Gateway or is there a contact at Gateway?
Please, 311, those requests, they do go to Gateway. We have a program manager who provides accountability and making sure Gateway is responsive and so you can follow up with us if you're not seeing response, but 311 is the direct line.
Okay, okay. And then one quick question, just with regard to bridges, so we've, so we've talked about Charles Anderson and Swinburne, just for the public, because I know this is a question we get a lot. So in terms of the timelines, because, you know, one and the other and both being closed at the same, you know, traffic is already pretty bad with the one, so.
Yeah, so Charles Anderson Construction is going to kick off next year. We should be bidding the project out to a contractor in February. That's going to be a good two, two and a half year project or so. We are still, of course, working through design on the Swinburne Bridge. Our intent is to get that design done, I believe, in '24 and bid out in '25, but we're going to set up the construction schedule so that that bridge does not close until Charles Anderson opens. You know, Charles Anderson, like the project itself could still have some things being finished, but we'd actually want to have the road open before closing the other one.
Okay, okay, good.
That's, that's the plan.
Yeah. And then the last question I have is, it's not really so much a question, it's just kind of a thought. When it comes to the micro-mobility, right, and we're talking about the pogo bikes and the scooters, we don't know what's happening with the scooters from the state that, you know, that's, it's sort of a wait and see. I, I do, I think most folks are pretty familiar with my feelings about scooters, but I do want to sort of make a plug for the pogo bikes because my understanding of pogo, and they, they have scooters too, by the way, FYI, that go right in the same, the same, you know, at any rate, but, you know, the same docking station, it's the same as the bikes. I don't know if pogo has them, but it's the manufacturer, at any rate, side note. I feel like the goal with pogo of having a pogo station within a short walk of everybody in Pittsburgh, right? I feel like if we kind of keep our eye on the prize with that one, right? If we can really do that, let's say, over the next five years, you know, my, my oldest kids are 11 years old, so let's, let's just, you know, say, in five years' time, if we really truly had a pogo station within a short walk of every, really anywhere in Pittsburgh, by the time my 11-year-olds are the age of getting a driver's license, right? And there's this question on the table of, well, do I want to drive or, you know, and here you have this option in the city that is easy and inexpensive, that is changing, that is how you create a bike. You know, we always talk about, oh, Amsterdam, whatever, could it ever be, well, that's how it happens, right? Is, is you, you do it on a generational scale like that. And then with public transit, hopefully, I know that's not for, but you know, couple that with, with moving forward with our public transit and I think that is how we get. So, you know, once this all shakes out at the state level, you know, when, when you start thinking again about priorities with micro-mobility, I think that, you know, there's a lot of potential with the e-bike program in Pittsburgh, so. But really thank you, I know that I've been hard on doing in the past, so, you know, I really, I appreciate all the, your, the work you've done, you know, with me and my office and everybody on council. It's been, it's been really a great year and thank, I don't know if you all have any last comments or anything else you want to add before we wrap it up?
I would add one quick thing is that we, it's wonderful to have the opportunity for leadership to sit at this table and share our accomplishments and what we're looking forward to next year, but so much recognition goes to the staff who is doing this work on a day-to-day basis and we're just, we've got the best people working for DOMI and they really care. So thank you for recognizing it.
Yeah, and I agree. Our team, even the leadership team, I mean, Mike's on vacation right now, he's taking the car right now, so thanks, Mike. But yeah, we are pretty close and we do work well together and, you know, we do want to see good things with the city of Pittsburgh.
Great, I guess, any other questions, councilwoman? No? Okay, all right. Well, with that, I guess I will, we'll motion to recess. Second?
There, there.
Okay, all right.[1767.33]